Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the Hideout Utah Town Council of Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of March 9, 2023. Uh, this meeting is electronic with no, uh, no anchor site. I'm going to get roll. Sure we have a quorum? Carol Hazelton.
I am here.
Thank you. Chris Byer. Chris.
I'm here.
Thank you. Sherry Jacobs.
Here.
Ralph Severini. And here. Thank you. Bob Nadelberg will not be joining tonight. He is working tonight and unable to join. We have a pretty full agenda this evening, so let's, uh, try and stay focused on, uh, on the topic so we can get through before too long. Number one tonight, uh, on section three, and the first item is, uh, right, uh, sorry, review of the town minutes from December 8th, 2022. That's bigger. And council. Do any of you have comments on the minutes?
I have a few comments, but I will give them to Alicia. They basically are either typos or just omissions of a word. I'll give it to Alicia later.
And I have no change. Sorry. So I know, so no. Polly, can we do that if there's no content change or does she have to, does that have to get recorded for the, the meeting?
Yeah, no, if it's just, um, type, you know, a comma or typographical or spelling, it's okay. If it's not substantively changing the minutes, we don't have to.
Right. It doesn't, it doesn't change the meeting meaning at all.
Okay.
Then it's fine.
Ralph?
I just have one follow, so I'm not sure when you want to take that.
I'll take that in section four for follow after we, uh, review the minutes and decide if they're good. Okay. Sherry or Chris?
I have no comments.
No comments.
Then I need, um, I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of December 8th, 2022.
I'll move. This is Carol.
Thank you, Carol. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Chris, approve?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And Carol?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, minutes are approved. Item. Four on the agenda is follow-up items, Ralph, so that's where you can jump right in here.
Yeah, I just had one. Hey, Jan, and it probably is Jan. Did we get a, any examples from Randy? That, you know, during the meeting, we talked about it, about getting some examples of the community renewal agency examples, so that we can, and maybe even pass those on to the EDC. Did we ever get those from Randy?
No, we did not. We, we, after we had the, um, the meeting with bond counsel, we kind of terminated the discussions temporarily. Um, but we can follow up and get those.
Yeah, it would be useful just in case we ever go in that direction.
Yes.
But yeah, what's, you know, what some examples were and Randy said he could deliver them to us. Okay, that was it.
Thank you, Ralph. Jan, you'll take that action item?
Yep.
Thank you. Item five, update on the Golden Eagle subdivision. Tim, do you want to go first and then Polly or vice versa?
I'll let Tim, Tim should go first, um, because he can speak more to what's on the ground in terms of updates. I've, everything I know is through, other people, so.
Yeah, 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 here. Hi, uh, thank you, Mayor. Hi, Council. Um, so yeah, as far as I know, I mean, listen, I, I was up there, uh, this week. They're, they're continuing to work on some areas. They're installing, um, Phase Two utilities. Um, and so that's kind of where they are at in focusing efforts. Still a lot of snow. Um, so again, uh, letters that have, uh, we have sent out to homeowners, uh, detailing what's still remaining. Um, we have sent emails out within the last week to, uh, various homeowners, uh, or, or people who have building permits, requesting building permits. Um, we, we are still, I guess Polly, I mean, do we want to talk about kind of what we're, we're, we're asking for in regards to testing for the water?
Yeah. So I mean, I guess the most recent, you know, the, the most recent letter that went out last month, I don't believe there have been any significant changes. We're still waiting for, you know, to confirm water pressure tests so that we can, so that the town can accept it. Um, we are working on putting together another letter to go out just to give homeowners, um, an update, but I don't think much has changed since February. Um, and really the only, I mean, yeah, so that's just moving forward. Um, you know, we're, we're continuing to move forward. Uh, Mustang has filed another TRO with the court. Um, but that doesn't change our position. We are continuing to inspect and move forward. So, um, you know, we're waiting for the work to be done so we can issue the permits.
And, and Polly, if I can piggyback off, and, and Mayor knows this, um, because he's copied in our correspondence, but just for everyone who's listening and for council members, we, we, we do communicate with them on a weekly basis of items that need to be finalized. Um, you know, and, and asking them for any updates on where they're at. And so, uh, we, we are not, you know, we are, we are being proactive in our communication efforts with them. And so, um, you know, and, and again, I, we're, we're, they're making progress and moving along. So we're really excited about that.
But Tim, has, has, has anything, have any of the items that were in that February, um, third letter been completed as far as you know?
As far as I know, no, that, nothing has been specifically completed as that February 3rd letter.
Tim, is it safe to say that some, some additional pressure testing has gone on?
I can't speak for that for purity. Yeah, I, I know that, that they haven't asked, um, that, well, they haven't involved me and that, that doesn't mean they may have not got a hold of Stefan to do a line. So, uh, I will double check, uh, but I, as far as I know, and with the amount of snow that we've had in the last week, I, I don't think they have done that. Uh, but I can't say for 100% certainty that, uh, they've requested a, a inspection, uh, or a pressure test on some of the remaining water lines.
Can you check with the guys and, and come back to me, please?
I will definitely do that. I'll send it, I'll send the email, text right now to Dan, actually.
Okay, that's the update on Golden Eagle. There's still work going on, still not to the point where they've met the requirements from the, from the letter of February 3rd that, uh, you know, supported by the court. Let's move on to item six. Public input. Uh, it's a floor open for attendees to speak on items not listed on the agenda. So these are things that are not uh, being talked about tonight. Again, the annexation policy plan is coming up next. There will be, uh, there will definitely be public input on that. To raise your hand, uh, to make a comment, raise your hand and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, address it. So I see, Ed O'Rourke, so Mr. O'Rourke. Go ahead and speak. You appear to be off mute, so go ahead and speak.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. By way of introduction, this is my first, my first meeting. I've just broken ground up in Soaring Hawk. It's wonderful to be finally, uh, becoming a resident in the community. Um, not on the agenda as a topic. I would not expect to address in full today, but I'd like to put it out there for follow-up. And the question is, does the town of Hideout have a, a formal procurement policy by which procurement spends, outlays for products and services that ultimately flow into the budget or are passed on to residents? Is there a formal policy that can be shared? And the subset behind this question would relate to the water meter decision that was made to change suppliers. And, um, and the cost of that water meter, um, is four times the cost of, of the prior water meter. It just, it, it's not a singular issue that I'm concerned about. Um, although I would like to know more about the decision to pass on a water meter expense to the community at four times the prior cost. If all things are relatively equal to what the performance of that water meter does. But more importantly than, than even that line item is, does the, does the town have a formal procurement policy that they can share with the residents in the community? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So yes, there is a formal procurement policy. Uh, there are stated approval levels. There are, um, uh, at, at the appropriate levels, the, uh, the number of bids come in, um, and so forth. So we have, uh, and, and, and at the right levels, uh, certain higher levels of procurement go to, uh, go to council for approval.
And to just, sorry, um, Mr. O'Rourke, you can look in the Hideout Municipal Code, which is on our website. And if you look up chapter 1.16, um, that has our purchasing policy. And it's in codified in our code, and that is what we follow.
Thank you.
Uh, and specific to you.
Thank you.
Specific to your question, sir, um, the new meters are, uh, are significantly more expensive because they, um, provide automated meter reading. So they're electronic and can be read, uh, without having to open each, uh, manhole and, and look at the numbers on the meter. Uh, which is a significant time-saving as well as, uh, significant, uh, help in a winter like this and where most of our water meters are buried by feet of snow. So, uh, so yeah, they're more expensive, but, uh, they allow us to ensure that, uh, we can track, what's going on with the meters even when they're buried. Additionally, they, uh, the new meters have technology that inform us, uh, if they're seeing, um, unusual flows which could suggest leakage. So helps us to, uh, get in front of a potential pipe break more quickly than waiting for it to bubble up through the ground. So that, that, uh, technology was brought forward. It was deemed, uh, high, up high value for the town, especially given the water situation in the state of Utah. And so, uh, we made the move to switch to those.
I think, thank you, Mayor, for that. Um, I, I understand the story to be different, uh, between the availability of water meters. But I'd like to table that issue for the moment. Um, I would just ask one final question and thank you. I will read 1.16 code on the procurement policy. But I would really like to hear whether or not there are any products that are procured or services procured that are further marked up um, and passed on to residents in order, in order to fund anything other than that particular product. So in the case of the water meters, as only an example, would those ever be marked up and passed on at a higher cost to fund a different line item in the P and L?
Water meters are, and anything include both the parts and the labor. So they have to be installed. And that, so if you want to call that a markup, then yeah, there's a markup and that the meters have to be installed. Uh, there have to be inspections and so forth. So, um, we don't consider that a markup. We consider that part of the service of, of installing and, you know, procuring and installing meter. Anything that bought, that carries a, a, a fee like that, um, a fee in our, in our schedules are only for that particular item. We're not moving funds from one pile to another. Uh, that's not allowed and we don't do that. So, uh, again, we can go through, uh, for your specific case, we can certainly take you through the elements that make up the total cost for install.
And Mayor, if I, if I can piggyback and add, uh, you know, uh, Polly and myself, we actually compared water meter costs in other cities and Heber and some other places nearby. Uh, and this is the, we're really close, uh, uh, to what, uh, other, uh, cities and towns are charging for, uh, installation and meter costs, uh, for the same type of system.
Thank you, Tim. And again, that information is available as well. Mr. O'Rourke will share that as well if you want to see all of those comparisons.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, what else, anything else on public input? Again, the process is to use the raise your hand function in, uh, in the Zoom screen and the Zoom control screen. Where it has a whole list of things like mute and stack video and those kinds of things in that same list. You should see raise your hand. I don't see anything else. Any hands coming up? So we'll close public input and move to the next item. Item seven is a public hearing of discussion, consideration of amending the town's annexation policy plan to include additional acreage in Wasatch County southeast of Hideout. I will tell you, uh, since this has gone to, uh, planning commission and come forward for council to review, the staff has been doing some work, um, with Wasatch County and some other potential interested parties, which may, um, may cause us to change the map again. And so I'm, I am recommending, while we will certainly have the, the input on what's out there today, that, um, I am recommending that we do not, uh, move to adopt it until, uh, staff and EDC come back and tell us that they're, um, whether or not they have additional acreage to consider. In the meantime, Thomas, you want to take us through where we are so far? He was on. There you go. Thomas, you're there.
Yeah, I see Thomas on. He's on mute.
Yeah. Yeah, I see him as well.
Sorry, I'm here, guys.
Okay.
Hey. I was switching over from my phone, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, um, I can walk you through this. So yeah, as you noted, this has gone through the planning commission process. This is a, uh, this is a recommendation to expand the annexation, uh, declaration area. Um, it did receive a favorable recommendation from the planning commission on February 9th. It's also worth noting, um, that this, that, that this discussion really was originated by the, uh, by the Benlock, Benlock Ranch Group who, um, approached the town, I, uh, in late November, early December. Um, they brought forth a, a concept plan review for the, uh, planning commission and then subsequently, um, uh, the planning commission, um, and town staff, uh, endeavored to look at the map, expand the ADA area, and that is what went through the planning commission process. And so,
So Thomas.
Yep.
Sorry. Planning Commission would have been February 16th, so what am I, is February 9th the right date?
Oh, sorry. That is, you're right. That was on February 16th. Sorry, that's a, that's a typo. That is correct.
Let's modify that.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure we.
That is, that is correct. They, they had a meeting.
Lines up, lines up with the minutes of the meeting and so forth.
Nope, you are right. It was January 19th and then, uh, yeah, February 16th. That's correct. Yep, sorry about that. Um, if you scroll down a little bit, I can kind of walk you through, yeah, if you scroll to the map, it's probably helpful to take a look at that now. Uh, so just by way of orientation, where you see Hideout Town Boundary there in the center, kind of the, uh, the beigeish area and the green area. Those are zoning designations within the existing town boundary. So they're kind of that red boundary is the existing town boundary. The magenta, the purple line that is around the town, that also includes, um, you know, Tua Hay to the south and, um, up north of Deer Springs to the north. That is the existing annexation declaration area boundary. What is being, what was proposed before the planning commission, what's being proposed tonight is the area in black, the horizontal lined area. That would be the proposed annexation declaration area. So in essence, what that would do is expand the town's sphere, if you will, for potential future annexations. It doesn't mandate that you accept annexations within that area, but it opens up possible annexations within that area. Um, you could see that the proposed ADA, um, basically goes down to the Heber City Boundary. Um, and, uh, if my understanding is correctly, they have some ADA, um, annexation declaration area boundaries within here. They can cross over. The state allows for that. So that is what is being proposed here. If you go down to the next page, Mayor, I think, yeah, why don't we, we'll go here real quickly. This was the impetus. This is what, uh, the concept plan that was brought to the planning commission in December, um, included. So you could see there, there's, um, you know, almost 800 single-family homes, uh, 300 plus condos and casitas, uh, 300, 500 plus townhouses, um, condos and casitas, exact mix not yet defined. We don't have that information. We don't have a more specific map yet. We don't have a phasing plan or anything. Uh, that application has not been submitted for the Benlock Ranch, um, just this concept plan. Um, and if the ADA does get approved, the expansion area, then, and, and then an annexation petition could be submitted, uh, which would include a much more rigorous process, additional detail review, phasing, all of that kind of stuff. But just for council's clarification, you do, you are able to see here, there's some hospitality component to this project as well as some about 30, uh, 30,000 square feet of golf course and lodge. And I think it's about, uh, 35,000, like the third or fourth bullet point there, 35,000 square feet of community retail. So this is a pretty, um, all encompassing, uh, master plan that, uh, Benlock Ranch has worked with Wasatch County to get an approval for. Um, again, that's not specifically up for discussion tonight, this actual annexation. Uh, that petition's not in, but that is the impetus for this, and we just wanted to be very transparent about that. To go to the next plan, you'll kind of see where that concept plan that was on the prior page fits into the annexation declaration expansion area. It's that area kind of in the, uh, the, the darker gray area. So that's kind of where it fits. It's about 2,300 acres. Um, it's a significant project. Um, any proposed annexation would of course have to connect to the southern part of Hideout. It has to be contiguous and can't create islands. Again, we don't have an annexation petition. We've seen conceptual maps of where it might connect, which would probably be on the left side, that dark green area of Hideout along the Jordan L, and then kind of wrap around, um, a bit like an L, if you will, to incorporate the Benlock Ranch. That's the initial, um, concepts we've seen. Again, no formal application. Um, if you're, if you scroll down a little bit further, Mayor, you can see that, I want to make sure that the council has the same opportunity to see what the planning commission did, kind of, uh, what, what they did review in terms of general plan. You could see the annexation goals from the 2019 general plan include fiscally responsible annexations, ensuring a financial benefit to the community, um, put, align potential annexation with the vision of the community, which is commercial development, preservation of, um, uh, and expansion of, um, open space views, connectivity to nature that, uh, and, um, uh, quality housing. So, um, this annexation, um, ex, declaration area expansion doesn't speak to that specifically. But as we do look at that concept plan, um, those goals, uh, do appear to be adhered to. Land use goals, preserving view sheds, mixing commercial uses, um, incorporation of, um, uh, the, the golf course and additional amenities, recreational amenities, um, uh, open space and passive open space preservation, those kinds of things appear to be incorporated into the concept plan. So it does seem to be roughly in line with, um, those goals that are part of the 2019 GP general plan. And if you go down a little bit more, uh, diversity of housing product, um, whether it's casitas, whether it's, um, estate housing, um, some mixed juice housing, um, housing above commercial, uh, the concept plan does appear to show that. So that appears to be in line, uh, balance of housing types, um, cottage development, casitas, again, part of that plan does appear to be generally in line. Economic goals are, uh, generally, um, financial viability for the community, property tax, um, access to commercial opportunities. That has been something that both you and the planning commission have focused on over the course of the past year. We're looking at additional commercial opportunities throughout town. But this does have about 30, 35,000 square feet of commercial incorporated, at least as the concept plan shows. So generally it appears to be in line. Nothing appears to be out of line, uh, in terms of the goals for the 2019 general plan. And then we do have a Hideout Annexation Declaration Area Plan. If you scroll down just a little bit further, you could see here that there are some goals to, uh, somewhat similar to the general plan, increase livability and quality of life, enhance, um, and expand current utilities, including water, sewer, et cetera, to ensure any annexation, um, is, uh, is seamlessly connected to the, the town's existing infrastructure, um, establishing, um, opportunities for additional, uh, potential schools for the residents and/or other, uh, public lands, something to be, uh, considered and explored with an annexation petition, recreational amenities. Again, they have the golf course. Um, enhancing, um, environmentally sensitive areas or protecting them. We don't have the details on that yet, but that would be something that would be a part of our review. And then again, balancing tax base and ensuring revenues for the community. So those are the six goals of the annexation declaration area plan for the community. Uh, the, what's before you tonight is simply the expansion of the ADA, not an annexation. And so generally we think that, um, all of those goals, um, would be, uh, closely, uh, aligned and focused on as part of a petition. One of the things that by the time we got to the, uh, second planning commission, uh, meeting, uh, the noticing two public utility providers had gone out for review and response. We did receive a letter. It is, um, attached in the first report that is attached as an exhibit to this, uh, which is a planning commission report. Both planning commission reports are attached as exhibits. The JSSD letter was included in there. They had some concerns with regard to the annexation, um, concerns stemming from, um, agreements they already have with Benlock Ranch and. They had some concerns with regard to the annexation, um, concerns stemming from, um, agreements they already have with Benlock Ranch and Wasatch County. Um, also concerns with regard to, uh, density and what would hideouts take on the density be? Uh, I've had the opportunity to speak with Max Covey at JSSD, um, assure him that our general approach to this is to take a look at this through the lens of Wasatch County's master, uh, master plan approval. We're not looking to increase densities that already have been, um, allocated. Um, again, we don't have an application, but that would be our recommendation, and that would generally be how we would review it, is review it as it has already been approved and presented. And again, you can see there roughly outlining some of those densities. That sixty-five thousand of commercial development at the bottom, just to be clear, includes the straight up commercial development and general lodge and recreational development, so that's a combination. Um. There may be a couple of additional lots, um, just in general conversations with Benlock that might come in with the annexation, uh, petition, those may have requests for density associated. Um, we haven't yet, we don't know exactly where those properties are, but we know that could be a few hundred, uh, residential, um, or equivalent, uh, yeah, residential equivalent units, um, and so we don't exactly, um, know exactly the, the vocation of those, but general conversations with, uh, the Benlock team have indicated that that may be a request that they look at. So that is something that we would consider, and we'd certainly want to coordinate closely with JSSD to make sure that if that is in addition to densities already, um, allowed, that, that we would certainly look at that in cooperation with them. Um, the planning commission. Go ahead.
No, that's fine, Tom, I thought you would, you know, you were just wrapping up.
Sure, yep, so the, uh, planning commission did forward the, the favorable recommendation, uh, on February sixteenth, and so we're simply here to answer your questions and/or, um, get your input.
So, uh, this is a public hearing, we'll open that up in just a minute, uh, let's wait, let's get some counsel input first, recognizing that what the, as I mentioned at the beginning, this, this, uh, staff and EDC are looking at some additional parcels not shown in the maps, uh, potential additional parcels not shown on the map that Thomas has drawn. We, they will, um, sort that out hopefully fairly quickly. Um, because if they want to make a change, it will have to start the whole process over.
And, and Mayor, just for clarification, it's, it's, we're pretty sure that those parcels are included within this ADA expansion. So that those are included and covered, um, it's just that we don't know exactly where they're situated in the conceptual plan for Benlock Ranch or just outside of it.
Okay, so anyway, so there's a little bit more work to go on with this, so I said we, we won't be voting on it tonight. Ideally, uh, we won't have to make a change in, uh, in the proposed map that's been through the planning commission, we can simply, uh, move it forward, uh, should the council want to at the next meeting. But, uh, I'll let the team come back to us, uh, before the next session and let us know where they are. Um, in the meantime, council questions on what you heard from Thomas so far.
Yeah, this is Chris, can I go first?
Sure.
Can you scroll back up to the boundary, uh, image?
Yeah. Yeah.
Great, and zoom, zoom it in, um, Thomas, a question for you, so can you explain how, let's say we did change the map, uh, and that we were contemplating, uh, a, a, a potential annexation petition for the Benlock Ranch area and maybe other parcels. How do we, how do we actually connect? I, I know you mentioned, uh, it looks like to the west of Tuahay, there's, you said green on the map. Is that the?
I don't know if you, I don't know if you can see my cursor, Chris?
Yep.
So we're talking about coming down, coming down the lake and then connecting here.
Okay, so that's the federal.
And then coming in, coming in that way, coming.
Okay, that's a federal property, Bureau of Reclamation property.
Yeah.
Would be, would serve as a connector to, to avoid the creation of an island.
That's correct.
We don't have access to that land, though, that's, uh, supposed to remain in a primitive state, we can't even put a trail in there.
That's right, it would only connect in as much as that land is currently, but, you know, most of that area in dark green that you see up there now is primitive protected land, right? The land that is below it in light green is, i- is very similar, um, in terms of its preservation, right? And pre- preservation requirements, that wouldn't change. What would change is that land would now be incorporated as part of the town of Hideout. It doesn't change its fundamental use or their rights to preserve, et cetera, but it becomes a link to get down to the ADA expansion area that you see in the horizontal black lines.
Okay, and so if we were to expand in this way, uh, the only way to get from Hideout North to future potential Hideout South is to go through Summit County, right? Whether you're on a road.
You'd have to, yeah, you'd have to go out, um, two forty-eight and then, yeah, cross over and then come back in on thirty-two down near Francis, yes.
Right. Or go the other way, the long way, on forty and up.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, again, it, you know, we're, we're so handicapped by being in the northmost extreme little finger of Wasatch County and surrounded by water or Summit County. This is just feels, it's just very awkward, it's our situation, we have to deal with it, but, uh, are we contemplating? So when I look at this map, do we have any parts of Summit County also in this expansion area, or is this all Wasatch?
It's all, but, it's all Wasatch County.
The, the, the expand, the new expanded area, Chris, is all only in Wasatch County, we're not looking at Summit at all.
And our existing annexation, uh, boundary map does include on the eastern side, parts of Summit County?
On the north side.
North side.
On the, on the, on the north and east side, yeah, you're right.
Are we thinking of including any additional parts of Summit County on the north and east side that may not be represented?
Not at this time.
It's not represented in the area that you see for the ADA expansion in the horizontal black lines, no, it's all in Wasatch County.
I'm actually talking about the entirety, the, the older, the, you know, the current, um, boundary map.
At this time, Chris, we have, yeah, at this time, Chris, we've not included any new space in Summit County that's, that would be different than what we've already included from the last, uh, when we expanded the map to the purple, which did include some space in Summit County and which is, uh, was just, a piece of which was just heard of in the Supreme Court.
Right, right, so that, yeah, I'm familiar with that area, I'm, I'm actually thinking on the Camas border side, Camas or Francis border.
No, nothing, uh, hmm, nothing at this time, there have been a few inquiries from, um, I've had a couple of inquiries from people in South Summit who join Hideout today, um, who have property that crosses Hideout, um, Wasatch and Summit, and we're, we're look, we're looking for a single land use authority to do business with.
Right.
Express some interest, but nobody has come forward at this time to, with enough impetus to suggest we modify the map.
Okay, um, practically, you know, one of the things that worries me is we, you know, we're, we're, first of all, I just want to say that I think it's important that Hideout expands because that's really our only chance, or we have very few other opportunities to be able to, uh, meet some of our, um, goals from the general plan without continuing to expand our annexation boundary maps. So I definitely support that. What I worry about in this particular case is the, feels like very large physical separation between our current, uh, existing town bound, city boundaries and wh- where we would have to go to get to Benlock Ranch. Uh, it's pretty far away. So, uh, I'm, I'd be very interested to hear what other council members think in the public about that, as well as what kinds of, uh, opportunities, revenue growth opportunities, would, would we be gaining, uh, by, you know, such an ex- expansion area that's so distant from our, you know, our core center right now?
Just as a reminder, Tom, I thought Thomas is, um, right up sort of defined what the potential opportunities are from, uh, from a revenue and, and, you know, other goal alignment items that mentioned. So the different kinds of housing, there's recreation, some trails, there's, you know, things in here that are, you know, in, in aligned with our vision. Uh, I do recognize that is not connected, but it is in, uh, as the law stated states in the present state, um, it is land that is, um, within the scope of what a municipality can annex from the unincorporated county without crossing county lines.
And, and Chris, I, I think, I think it's a good question, you're right, there is some certain, certainly there's geographic separation, and so that is something that I think that, that, that we, that you as council would certainly want to look at if, if a petition does, uh, follow an ADA expansion, assuming everything goes as, uh, is being presented over the course of the next month or two. But I would also point out that, um, yeah, we would get additional housing, it may, it may be disparate, it may be slightly separate, it might be satellite-ish, but it could be a benefit from a revenue perspective, and I would also note that any annexation does require a third party, uh, fiscal analysis so that you would have a pretty solid understanding of exactly what those benefits would be. I think you're also talking about, and rightly so, quality of life benefits, how do we connect to them? How do eventually, we think about wrapping that community into the greater, the existing community, if you will? And I think those are things we would want to explore as part of that annexation petition, that makes complete sense. I mean, other things such as infrastructure and maintenance and requirements for likely an HOA down on that end to take care of that, because we can't do that, would also want to be explored and, um, you know, discussed with y- you all as well as the, the applicant.
Yeah, thank you, Thomas.
Hey, Chris, I was just going to say, we, we really haven't run an economic analysis on this either from the EDC. Um, well, and we looked at, we had, we entertained some of this as well, we had a private session. And I, and, um, this kind of, you know, so, um, you know, we have six, we have a number of bullets here, uh, like sixty-five thousand square feet of commercial, commercial and a lodge, et cetera. But to be very honest with you, I don't think we've done, we're not even close to understanding what the economics of this is from a profit, or so to speak, an income and an expense standpoint. So we need to, you know, I mean, before we jump, I mean, we can, we can build an annexation, in my opinion, but I don't think we, we would necessarily prove anything to be annexed, um, until we did a really thorough analysis. And there's going to be some additional cost here, and maybe not as much revenue as we initially thought as well. So I think we, I think we owe it to ourselves to do a really good job on that and really thorough job.
And, and we wouldn't be working on that until we have made a decision to expand our boundary map, annexation boundary map. We wouldn't have any opportunity to work on that.
Well, we could if they gave us data to support their, you know, I mean, we, we, I, I don't think you need, from an economic development standpoint, you don't need an official annexation or approval by a planning board commission. You can look at numbers if they're willing to share their data with us, which they could do right now. I don't feel like we've gotten enough data that, uh, we could do a, an adequate analysis. I know Katie's not, uh, on the, not on the line, and none, none of the other folks, but I, I think she'd echo that opinion and sentiment as well. So I think that's just part of our job, um, and we have to do a really thorough analysis. Um, one question I had, Thomas, a- and is JSD, JSSD report seems to indicate that, um, you know, the, their biggest, their, one of their big issues besides the water consumption, um, is the non-contiguous. So you just brought into mind that they, that the, uh, you know, uh, non-used land, the state land or whatever can be, uh, can be incorporated as a, um, a- as a piece of contiguousness, so to speak. Why didn't JSSD recognize that? What was, you know, I mean, what did, what, since they brought that up in their report, why didn't they?
I, I, I don't think that, in fairness to JSSD, they haven't had any discussions with the Benlock team or seen conceptual plans or, you know, lines on a map, so they didn't have access to that. So I guess that is why, when I spoke with, uh, Max Covey, I kind of outlined really, um, uh, generally what that, what that connection would be. And so I think they just didn't know exactly how we would make that connection. They weren't, they, they hadn't seen any of those conceptual maps, um, that, you know, we have, uh, you know, seen as a result of, um, early negotiations and discussions with Benlock Ranch. So I think that that was why, um, they just didn't, they, they hadn't seen it, and maybe they, they didn't have a good sense of, uh, e- exactly where the existing lines were that you could go down, uh, along the state land to connect to this area, pretty easily.
Yeah, so that, so my, I guess my point is, um, one more step, if we share our, uh, you know, how we would go about doing this, um, you know, will that, you know, I think we'd like to get some, some input from JSSD that that would allay their concern, so to speak, can you, can you take care of that, Dan, Thomas?
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely do, I spoke, I spoke with Max today, again, we kind of discussed density and some other things. And, um, you know, there, that, uh, generally, I think that he had a much better understanding and was much more comfortable with what was being proposed, because at the end of the day, they've had negotiations with the Benlock Ranch team, with the app, that, 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 uh, developer, and, um, I think they want to just ensure that their agreements would remain in place. I, I let him know that it was my understanding that we had no intention of changing that, we have agreements with, um, JSSD, we don't intend to change those, the agreements that they have with Benlock Ranch that are already underway in terms of infrastructure, um, development and expansion, et cetera, we would, we would have no intention of changing that. That would remain the same, it would simply, if annexed, be in a different jurisdiction. I think that allayed some of, uh, his concerns, and unless I spoke out of turn, I don't think that we want to maintain and/or, uh, service that infrastructure. We would follow that as we do, um, with JSSD currently.
And is there, is there a thought to, um, include that little cutout there on the left-hand side, um, which gets closer, yeah, um, just drop down the cursor a bit, um, in the pink spot, which it looks like a, um, kind of a rectangle there, yeah, exactly, um, I think I know what.
Pink spot is Heber City.
That's Heber City, that's the Sorenson.
The Heber City.
Okay, so we can't do anything with that, with that kind of cutout, that's already, that's within their boundaries, correct?
That's within the Heber City jurisdiction, that's their city boundary.
Okay, just wanted to double check on that, okay, everything else in the hatch lines or the, you know, cross lines are, um, kind of open territory in Wasatch then, is that what I'm?
Open territory in Wasatch, it's, it's not, it's part of Wasatch County, it's not part of any incorporated jurisdiction. It is, however, again, north of Heber City boundary, they have an ADA that crosses over in areas where this proposed ADA expansion areas, that, that's allowed, you can, you can have overlapping ADA expansion declaration areas, but it's, we can't go into the city boundary.
Yeah, so that, whi- which, which tells me that, um, and I still don't think we have all the data of why they're not interested in it, so to speak, because it does include part of their ADA, so be, it, it would be good to understand, again, what is their concerns and why they would want to include that, because it actually sticks into Heber City, so.
You know, anec- anecdotally, what we've heard is they're very busy with some of the existing developments going on there that are quite large, specifically the Sorenson development site, that area, that big rectangle that you just kind of pointed to is a significant development project, and I'm not sure they're ready to undertake another one, but that's anecdotal. And I do, um, intend to reach out to Tony Kohler, the planning director for Heber City. and just make sure that I have a much better understanding of that. And I'll convey that to you all.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Right, Carol?
It is, it is about the golf course. In the last month, MIDA and/or part of that development announced their plans for the Marcella Golf Course, which if I am correct, is almost directly across forty. From the Benlock Ranch, it may be a little bit further north, but very close. And I just have a real concern with golf, all these golf courses that seem to be going in. Remember that there's one in Two Hay. And all the usage of water. The, the water that's required for these golf courses. And I know that we've had a great winter, but it doesn't mean we're going to have further great winters. And I think water's going to be a real issue. And I, I just have major concerns that another golf course is going in.
I think that's a great, great comment, Carol. And if there was to be an application from Benlock, that would certainly be the time for us to better understand and challenge that. Because of what you just said, I mean, Hideout has a nine-hole course. There's an announced course. You know, as, as you said, there's there's one in Two Hay, et cetera. So I, I think it's right. I'm not sure that we even have a golf course. I'm not sure it does. You know, unless it's, you know, exclusive to the community and they have the water for it. But I, I agree with you. It's not a great use of water anyway. So, but at the moment, we have no application. We just have a, a concept plan.
Right. I'm going to. All right. I'd also like to address the same issues that Chris did. How separated it is from the current Hideout Town? And I, I understand that they are talking about annexation, but our current residents, how many people that currently live in Hideout would get on the, on either two forty-eight or forty or thirty-two to get to that place and utilize it and also utilize the commercial that's going in. I mean, I personally would still continue to go either into Park City or to Kimball Junction or into Camas for commercial. This just seems so far removed. So I don't know how the commercial really benefits us.
I think the challenge, the challenge that we have is as, as the law currently written, the places that we can more easily, I guess is the right word, look at annexation are within Wasatch County. And so you know, this is an, 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 a less developed section of Wasatch County, which provides you know, an opportunity for us to influence what goes in there and see how it helps us. If we're looking to be contiguous to Hideout, then we can't grow. I mean contiguous in that it has to be on our same side of the road and two forty-eight and fit somehow between Two A and and Summit County at the, at the at the, you know, at the Jordanell Parkway, kind of limits what we can do. So I, I mean, I think we have to think of it both ways, Carol. I think you're right. It's disconnected from a road standpoint. But I think it provides you know, us a chance to attract some of the things that we, we said we want to do. So just because of the way Hideout is designed as a, as a, you know, a piece of Wasatch, basically surrounded by Summit. It kind of becomes the only place we can look.
Yeah, Mayor, this is Chris. I, I, I agree. I agree with that. Carol, I just want to say I do recreate down down, you know, on the Coyote Trail Network and, and such. It's really awesome down there. So it's worth the drive. And, and it's possible that the Benlock Ranch area could also be worth the drive, depending, depending what's, what, what would go in there.
Yeah, I too recreate down there on the Rock Cliff side of, of the Jordanell as well. So.
Yeah.
Right. I, again, I'd like to request a site visit. I mean, I realize it's been impossible with the snow we've had. But maybe before we make any final decisions, if we do get any kind of sign that we could go view it. I know there were real issues with the last site plan visit. I, I'd just like to request that we try again.
I, I would just mention that there's two different things going on here, right? I mean, the first, if we even want to consider the Benlock annexation, then we need to expand our ADA area. But, so, but by approving the ADA area, you are not approving that annexation.
Yeah. So that, I mean, it's just, it just says that we can take the next step and discuss tomorrow then. Because they, they fit inside our ADA area.
Right, Polly, this is Chris. Sorry.
Does not guarantee them, does not guarantee them that we would be willing to annex.
So in, in that, in that line of, you know, thought, is there any downside in expanding our annexation area?
From a legal perspective, I don't think so. I mean, if you feel that it meets the general plan and the things in your annexation, your declaration policy plan. I think you can expect, there's no downside.
Okay, that's what I was thinking as well. Thank you.
Other questions from council before I open it up for public input?
Yeah, one, one last question there is, is there any option to expand in any other area? So rather than going back to the well, if we, if we did pass something like this, are we, are we missing anything here? Thomas, maybe you could share with me your insights into the, any, any other, any other areas adjacent to the additional boundaries that you set on the ADA. Are there any other things that we're missing that might be useful for, for, for adding to our ADA?
I don't think so. We're coming up pretty closely, specifically if you're looking at this map, if you look on to the right side or the east side and the south side, we pretty much come up to the boundaries, incorporated communities or Summit County boundaries. We can, you know, I, I, we can always do one more quick review and look, but I don't think there's any other areas that we have discussed that would need to be included in the ADA expansion area for potential residential or economic reasons.
There are some parcels around forty and thirty-two on the other side of the road and so forth that again, you know, there's not, some of this is already being developed. But some of this is still being, so could we cross forty, for example, Ralph?
Yeah, exactly.
We could look at that.
But, you know, that's, that's part of what I kicked off this discussion with is that, that there are some some work going on with some parcels that may or may not be in this expansion area. That's what we're trying to figure out now. In, in, in the currently documented one that is being proposed.
Yeah, because Mayor, I think that's what you were referencing earlier, are, have we, have we? Parcel, because I think the Benlock Ranch is all within the proposed ADA expansion area and their parcels that have not been master planned. Those are included within this ADA boundary expansion. So they could be covered. But I think your question is, have we explored, to your point, maybe a little bit to the west of forty and/or other areas? That's worth exploring.
And I, you know, I know that there's some work going on with the county in this area. There's some people who want to do some commercial here that's being thought about. And I, as I mentioned, I, there are some landowners right in here that had at one point expressed sometimes, oh, this, this, this basically goes into Summit. So we had, we're not doing anything different there at the moment. There is some, there is some Wasatch County land already in here. In this upper northeast corner where the purple lines already cover. The Wasatch, the Wasatch boundary does go beyond what we've got in purple. But most of that is very large plot parcels, as you can see by the flat map. And a lot of that is commercial excavation type properties, stuff like that where they're, you know, pulling rock out and doing those kinds of things. But we, you know, we're, again, doing this, this time doesn't mean we can't come back in two years and adjust this again. You know, we're trying to understand everything that we have been approached about or have thought about in this one. You know, this has been, I guess, this will be three years since we, three or four years since we finalized the last, this purple version.
Yeah, I'm just, just thinking that, you know, if we could prioritize that, say, an open chunk of land that's contiguous to this annexation, that we could do more concentrated commercial, that would probably benefit the town the most. But I'll, I'll let you come back from, you know, next, next shot around and see if, and, and actually in the interim, Thomas, if you have any thoughts or Mayor, I'd be interested in how that could factor into our, you know, economic development thinking as well.
Yeah, we, we can, we can look at that and convey it. Yep.
Okay, thanks.
If there are no more questions from council, I will open it for public input. In, in reference to this this expansion of the ADA. And I see Damian's hand up. So go ahead, Damian, and ask your question.
Good evening. I listened to this discussion at Planning Commission and I spoke at that time as well. And I wanted to say the same thing to you guys. You're, I, I think it's said over and over again, you're not evaluating any particular project right now. And as Polly said, there's no legal ramifications for including as much land as possible. The only thing that you'd be wasting is money if you do a small plan now and then you have Thomas re-studied another plan in three years or another plan in six years. Why don't you make the plan as physically large as you possibly can to every jurisdiction that you have some contiguous connection with, that you're obviously not going out of counties? Why don't you make the ADA as big as possible one time and then you don't ever have to do it again? So that's my question. And then I have one more question. I, I didn't think about this until tonight and Ralph kind of said it. I understand the benefit that we have to Benlock Ranch or whatever other commercial entity that would potentially give us more revenue. What, and, and Thomas, I don't know if this is something you can answer or if, I don't know if someone has a better idea. What is the benefit to a project like Benlock Ranch or whatever the project may be? What is the benefit of that project to be annexed into our community? Like what, what are they getting out of it? So those are my two questions.
I think that, I, I don't know the exact answer. I, I can say that, but I suspect that they think that there's a benefit. Maybe it is working with the community. Maybe they like the direction, the vision of this community. Maybe they think it's easier to work and coordinate with the community. Maybe it is, maybe it's a branding concept. I don't know exactly, but I suspect it may be a part or a combination of all of that.
Would they be allowed to do things that they wouldn't be otherwise allowed to do in their current jurisdiction?
I don't know exactly apples for apples, but they would have to follow our ordinance, which I think is very similar to.
Our codes, our codes and ordinances. I mean, you know, so if we differ significantly from the county, then they might, they might see some advantage of that. I don't know. And that's part of the things we have to talk about for them. Is, you know, you know, they've expressed, to me anyway, that they've expressed that they they, they want to do some styles of housing that are not currently looked upon favorably by the county, but, but do meet our vision of, of diversifying the housing. So that's one, one thing I do know. And, and you raise a good point, Jamie, and I, I'm sorry, Damian, why not, why not just do it once and cover it all? We'll, we'll, we'll think through that. I don't know, I don't know that there's any downside, other than a lot, we get a lot more comments the broader we go. We, we got, because a lot of the areas that, that are available contiguous to, to the area that's on the, in the purple are currently developed. And when we, as are some of the areas inside the purple. And we spent a lot of time explaining that the map doesn't mean we're annexing you. We, we had meetings with the Deer Mountain community, for example, who is very concerned. We had meetings with the, the HOAs up at Black Rock and so forth, because they were concerned that we were going to you know, pull them out of the county and put them into Hideout. We explained that the laws don't allow that. That, you know, the landowners have to agree and so forth. But we spent a lot of time helping people get comfortable with the fact that this map did not mean that they're, that they were getting taken over. And so if we, the broader we go, we, the more of those kinds of discussions we may be dealing with. So we, you know, we may want to, you, you bring up a good point, but maybe we only want to tackle those things, even if we have to spend a little bit more money every few years, because we've got landowners who are interested in coming in as opposed to just opening up the door saying, let's get it, let's, let's pull in, you know, a good portion of unincorporated Wasatch. We'll, we'll think it through. I think you asked a good point. We'll, we'll think it through.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jamie? You should be able to.
Hello, Mayor and council members. How are you guys tonight? Thank you so much for taking the time. And hearing your discussion and deliberation. I understand the concerns and questions you guys have. Benlock Ranch is not a small annexation. It's a large one. And we did not tirelessly, but we went through the annexation map probably like four or five times with Jason Bowle and Wade Budge and everyone from Salem Wellmore, along with Thomas and staff. And it's been fantastic working with them. And so we went through every bit and piece of land that we thought that would work continuously other than trying to pull Heber into Hideout, which doesn't work. And vice versa. So we, we went through all those processes and we've done some PACT modeling, et cetera, that was, I think, a third party that did that. I'm not actually totally privy to those numbers. But I think they point in the right direction. The one thing that we do have is we know that we're, we're asking just for the map adjustment tonight. And, and like I think quite a few of you have said, with that comes latecomers, right? And so other people are going to want to continue to tag on to this. And so other people are going to want to continue to tag on to this. Wherein the problem lies is, is we're right now, um, I guess kind of pseudo hogtied with Wasatch because. To be honest, they're, they're not exactly ecstatic that we're possibly gonna leave. Because of, of the tax revenue, et cetera. And so I think they, well, they pretty much stalled out all of our future Platts and, and progress. So we don't have the luxury of wading through numerous um, iterations on. Especially when I'm, we're thinking about this just general map overlay. We're not. You're not promising to annex us in tonight. You're just saying, you know, we're agreeing that we're gonna expand the boundary because we think. Benlock's gonna bring possibly some workforce housing, possibly some de facto workforce housing that's smaller. Um, more affordable despite the nature of the way it's built and the, and the, and the size of the home, et cetera. Um, along with open space and. You know, we're looking to lots of, you know, mandated solar and just all sorts of really fun things that we're trying to be innovative about. That we're running into some brick walls with other municipalities and. We've had a fantastic time thus far with you guys. Um, I'm not asking you guys to rush us through the door, but. I do know the longer this gets drug out. There may come a time where we're gonna have to bifurcate and say, okay, your annexation now is smaller because we just platted another plat in Wasatch. Because we're kind of, we're tied to two things. And it's, it's, it's not beneficial for myself nor. Hideout to continue for us to sell and plat and continue to. Create an advantageous situation for Wasatch. And um, not for hideout. So. I understand your concerns. I'm, I'm just hoping that. Thomas and Jason and everyone can maybe speak this, that we've scoured the map multiple times and. Someone's always gonna try to come late, right? And they're always gonna try to tag along or. Jump in, but we cannot, we don't have the luxury to wait for that just due to the economics of the size of the project, et cetera. And we'd love to work with you guys and, and I respectfully would request a vote that we. We move this forward and adopt at least this se- section of the map. That really contains. Most everything. I mean, we're adjacent to Victory Ranch is totally built out to the south is all Heber. The other side of us actually is more um. Sorensen, there are a few pieces across forty that are. Quite steep and I don't know what those are, but I. It's by the time they get their, their act together, uh. It'll be maybe months away and at that point in time, we probably won't be. In this, in this place, in the place we're at. So I'm disrespecting your time and our time and we don't want to waste anyone's time, but. I'm just, I'm hoping we can uh. Move forward with the map adoption and then we can get to the nitty gritty and, and. You know, work together and try to make a successful, amazing project that's. Good for all walks of life, not just the super wealthy, but everyone that walks down the street and, and lives and works in Heber. And hideout or Wasatch or all above, we're all the same people. So we're, there needs to be some diversity in the valley and we're here to provide it.
Thanks, Jamie. Well, I guess Thomas, I'll come back to you and, and Jan. Is the stuff that you're thinking about. Different enough or? You know, I, I don't want to do this and then revisit it. In three months. So I don't know, I mean, I'd rather wait the extra month. I know it's, it's difficult for, to, to be sure because. Otherwise it's gonna be. It's, because it's a multi-month process. It takes. To bring in those other people, um, if they come along as, as Jamie said. So I, I just don't know enough about. The, the figures that you and Jared are looking at.
Jan, I'll let you, I'll let you speak, but I mean, there's nothing. In addition to what we've shown here, where, where I have had any active conversations with anybody. And so. Does that mean that we could not explore to the east toward forty, as you noted earlier? That is something that we could do. Um, but we haven't had any active discussions with folks over there or any immediate need. And so. Um, it might be something nice to do, but I do suspect that could be down the road, honestly. Unless Jan, am, am I missing something where maybe the town has had another conversation? I, I may not be aware of all of them.
I'm waiting um, some feedback on a conversation with the county. Um, but. You know, what is, if we adopt this. And let's say we get a response in two weeks. Can we send it back to amend? The ADA without too much difficulty in the next meeting?
No.
I, I think it would.
Redrawing the map, we'd have to go to planning commission, it'd have to have public meeting, public uh. Uh, public hearing for that and then then come here and have another public hearing. So it's, it's, it's quite a few months of work. So it's, you know. Like, you know, if you've got discussions going on and, and you think that they're gonna happen within the next couple of weeks, I'm. You know, it's, it's four weeks away roughly for our next meeting. Um, if, if, if. If it doesn't come to fruition, then this can come up for council and be approved. On the uh, on April, whatever date is. April. Thirteenth. If it, if we do have to modify it, then. You know, we, we put some other stuff at risk and we have to consider if the, if that's, if, as Jamie mentioned. We have to consider what you, what you learned, Jan, whether or not that is. Justifiable or if we would just tell those people that it could be done, but it, you know, look more like a. You know, a late twenty-three kind of activity.
Could we split the difference and have a special council meeting, say in two weeks? Just for this issue?
We could.
We could look at that, we could look at map expansion in that time period. I guess I'd want to confirm with Polly if we. Do look at potentially maybe something on the west side there, let's say down toward forty. Um, do we have to? Are we required to take it back to the planning commission or no? The council can amend without going back through that step?
How far, I guess. It's a little hard to say, right? I mean. I would think that you'd probably to go. I don't know. I mean, you can amend the map for sure under the current plan, but if it's just completely different, I mean, the whole focus of the discussions thus far. Have been related to the south. And expanding it to the south, so. Uh, you may, I don't know, I think maybe you'd want to jump through those hoops again, just to make sure that we're. The people are on notice if they're within that ADA area.
So if that's the case, your, your recommendation would be maybe move forward with this one and. Then uh, continue work and if we do find some benefits down there, take that to planning commission, bring it back to council.
Exactly.
Okay, and, and it, it may not be that much work. I mean, this, this one has been a little bit more work in as much as we've been working with uh, um. You know, a, a potential applicant. And so there's been a lot more information back and forth and significant dialogue. Um, so I don't know that it would be a lot of work if we did want to expand in that southwest corner. Um, it would just. Take some, it'd take two planning commission meetings and a council meeting essentially, but the mapping work would be pretty straightforward. Jan, does that make sense to you though?
Yes. That works.
But what I'm hearing is. A suggestion to have the council. Vote on this tonight. And then if you've got something new to come forward, we might have to. Four months from now have the same discussion again. Slightly different. Hatched, hatched area. Add it on. I think that's what I'm hearing. How do you feel about that council?
I think that makes a lot of sense because we need to start moving forward with something. And down the road, we could have more areas that we can annex. So let's get started.
Yeah, this is Chris. I'm gonna say, yeah, I'm with Sherry because. Uh, Mayor, as you said very well earlier, we, we need to expand and this is our area, Wasatch County. So, uh, 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 I'm uh, in favor.
Well then, what I would like to, to ask then, I think we've got at least half of. Of councils on record of bringing it forward to just for uh, for a recommendation decision. So um, I don't see any other hands up from a public hearing standpoint. If there are no other. Public input. Questions, let me close. The public hearing input side and look for a motion from.
One, one last question before we go to vote. Um, and, and I, and I'm, I'm generally in favor of. You know, moving forward. Um, what does it cost us? Is there any financial cost to run this through other than for our time? So doing this in two piece parts, do we know, I mean, do we have to file any papers that cost us money legally? I mean, those are. You know, it's like, is it gonna be five thousand dollars for us to do this again or what? Any, any cost, Mayor?
It's, the, the cost is staff time. Um, other than that, um, to the best of my knowledge, there's no, uh, there's no fees for uh, amending. Your uh, ADA area and publishing the result. Polly, is that your understanding as well?
Yes.
So if we do come up with something, it's gonna be Thomas's time then to kind of draw the lines again, so to speak.
And in planning commission time and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, but not, none, none.
Your point, it would be minimal because it would just be really mapping at that point. It's not coordinating with an applicant.
Okay, just wanted to get that straight to see if there was any other legal filings that we needed to make each time we do this. I, I didn't think so, but I just want to verify that. Thanks.
Okay, thanks Ralph. Good question. Um, so I would. If, based on what I'm hearing, I'm looking for a motion to amend the town's annexation policy plan. To include the additional acreage in Wasatch County southeast of hideout as shown on uh, the map here tonight.
I so moved.
Thank you, Sherry. Can I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it. True.
Thank you, Ralph. Okay, Chris, what do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Carol?
Can I only do a vote now? I, I have a question.
Um, okay.
Which, and, and my, my question is. Um, are there going to be any repercussions from Heber City? And any costs involved in a potential lawsuit or litigation?
I, I can't predict what Heber would do, but uh, it's, it's legal to have overlapping maps. Uh, there is no annexation that's been brought forward. It's simply an indication that there's some land that if, if the landowner and hideout would come to an agreement that, that um. That we would be, you know, looking to do business with, then um. You know, they would have the opportunity during that whole annexation process to raise their concerns. So I don't think, I think Polly's better to answer this, but I don't think we're gonna get sued over a map.
I, I agree. I, I think our risk, but I mean, of course, people can litigate. Um, people can, there's no, well. People can always file a lawsuit, but I don't think that this would um. Create any threat of litigation and I haven't heard of us being threatened. Or anyone having big issues with us, with this expansion.
I agree. And I reached out to. Heber city manager and he understands that we are doing this and he's uh, in support.
Okay. And I'll vote yes.
So Polly, do I need to rekey that up because we have sidetracked?
Um, no, I think you're okay. You're, she just, it, it's okay.
Okay. Question for clarity, okay. Uh, so then, so Chris is yes, Carol is yes, Ralph?
Yes.
And Sherry?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. We are going to amend the ADA area as described this evening. Thank you all.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate your time. Have a lovely evening.
All right, thanks Jamie. We're looking forward to rolling up our sleeves with you, okay?
We're, we're gonna send you some uh, very granular stuff coming next, so we look forward to it and then um, once again, have a great night.
Thanks.
Bye.
Um, all right, I'm trying to get to the next section and I clicked the wrong thing. Okay, so hopefully Zoom is not causing any problems because I clicked the Zoom link by mistake again. Uh, anyway. Uh, we're gonna move to agenda items. And the first one um. Is we had a resignation from the planning commission. And we, you know, we have alternates and Rachel Cooper is a, who is an alternate. Was put forward by Tony Mattesek in the planning commission. As uh, the, the alternate is next to move into. Planning commission. So um, because appointments to the planning commission are done with. Uh, the advice and consent of council. I'm bringing that to you with the recommendation that we move Rachel in as a regular voting member. I will also tell the council that we have three interested parties. Um, in participating with the planning commission as an alternate. So Tony is uh, going through those uh, those submittals right now and. Uh, we'll be coming back with a couple of recommendations for adding alternates to the planning commission to fill the uh. The, the, the vacant alternate roles. Any questions?
You just need our advice and consent uh, uh, for Rachel's um, appointment.
Exactly. So I would just ask that you uh. I'll ask you by a vote, vote, voice, a voice vote to uh, support the uh. Appointment of, of Rachel as a regular voting member. Chris?
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you. Carol?
Yes.
Thank you. Sherry?
Definitely.
Okay, and Ralph?
Yeah, definitely as well.
Thank you. All right, welcome. Rachel? The next one is. Not one I was. I, we, you know, we spent a lot of time on this last year and, and put a lot of work into it. Um, the. The staff did a lot of work trying to um, make. A difference in the weed, on the weed, uh, on the war weeds. And we made good progress. Uh, we had to, a lot of, a lot of work inspecting lots. Ourselves and contacting lot owners and chasing folks to do what they were supposed to do and. Trying to get paid for um, by landowners uh, for. For the work that we did on their behalf because they. for the work that we did on their behalf because they, they didn't respond or do it. And the result of all that is, uh, uh, staff has, um, come back and said, that's a lot of work. I mean, Carol Custerly, we have weed guys, some of whom, um, we, we paid because we still haven't been paid by everyone that we did cleanup work on. Um, we had, uh, Dan's team, uh, you know, out taking pictures and so forth. Um, and so there's, there's a recommendation here and, and I don't know. Um, Carol's on, I don't know, um, if, um, Cameron's on because I think he did the work on this, but maybe Polly can address.
Yeah, I'm, I'm up to date on it.
The recommendation is basically, uh, that we kind of put the onus on the loan, on the owners and try and get the, uh, the town staff out of it as much as possible and, um, go after it a different way. So maybe Polly, you can take us through the, the changes.
So, um, there, the biggest change is that it puts the onus on the landowner to send in a report. Um, so that we aren't going out and having to inspect everywhere. Instead, if we get reports from the homeowners, then we can just go out and look at lots where, or parcels where a report was not submitted and see if they, um, if they have issues. Um, and, um, we also changed the requirement about, uh, the six inches and instead required them to remove or dispose entire root system. Um, is another change. Um, and, um, so those were kind of, um, that was kind of the big process change. I also added some changes so that it was clear, you know, that the weed list would be based on the state weed list. Um, requiring a report to be in writing and ideally we'll come up with a form that people, that will get sent out that people can, um, fill out and send in, but as long as we have something in writing, um, and there are certain properties that are exempt. If there's no, if it's the HOA who controls the common area within a subdivision, then it would be the HOA's responsibility. And so I thought that was important to, to make that clear. And, um, let me see, and that was kind of the big ones. And then also I
I get
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I just, I'm not sure if, because this is the one in the PDF. I, Alicia, do I need to be looking at the Word version of this?
You know what? Um, I realized that I didn't send out Polly's version that she sent later. Um, so that one did not get into this packet. Let me go ahead and forward that to you really quickly. I think actually you might have it. Um, but I can forward it again really quick, so it's at the top of your email. So I apologize.
So let's, I want to make sure we're looking at the right, the right one, guys. So
Yeah, for sure.
Stop the, stop the share and then, uh, I'll bring up the right one. All right, let's get this up. And let's figure out where I am to share. Share screen. This one. So you now should be seeing one that is, uh, has red as well as blue. Have you seen that?
Yeah.
Okay. So this, this talks, this is the stuff that Polly, uh, some of the things that Polly brought in that wasn't in the one that was in the package, so. So this is the, some of her language. Carol, I see your, your, so I know you've got some comments, so come on.
Just, just when Polly's through with what she would like to say.
Okay. So, yeah, the last thing I had was just that I like the idea of putting in an annual date so that we're not, the ordinance isn't referring to some letter that's going out. Um, Carol mentioned to me afterwards that that might be problematic, but we can talk about ways to address that. Um, and so, yeah, this is a effort to try to put the responsibility more on the lot owners so that we know that they're taking action.
And, you know, and I guess I don't see this as a particularly, um, invasive request. I mean, most of us aren't doing this ourselves. We're using a service of some sort. At the end of the service, they send me, uh, a statement, uh, saying that they came and did this, 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 and this. And that, you know, would serve as the documentation that we could, that I can submit to Carol or the town, um, saying that this is what I had done. So I, I don't, it's not like, I don't think it's a significant burden on the, uh, on the landowner, uh, if they're getting it stuffed.
I, I would, uh, say, I know I, we do our own weed control in my property, but it's not a difficult thing to, to, to submit a note or a form to the town. You know, like just explaining the conditions and I mean, if, if you're taking the time to send a form into the town to say that you took care of your weeds, you probably took care of your weeds.
Right, and hopefully on the form, we will have a way for you to explain to us how you took care of your weeds.
Yep.
Could I ask how many, uh, lot owners did not respond this past year?
Uh, the biggest problem we had was the, um, the HOAs and some of the developers not responding. I would say that the lot owners did very well. And on the people who did not respond to the abatement notice, um, I just kept after them and all but one paid. And, um, so I felt really good about that because we, we narrowed it down to five that we couldn't get to pay. And I personally researched the changes in their emails so that we could find a proper way to communicate with them. And all but one was found and paid. And we're very cooperative about it. We only had one that did not pay, so the town only paid for one owner and Wasatch County and Hideout have not been able to locate this person. So, um,
Okay, so we, we just had one person you couldn't locate who couldn't, couldn't pay because you don't know where they are.
Yeah, they won't, they won't respond. I tried to reach them in every way I could. I contacted the county.
Yep.
I went out onto the web. Anyway, so I felt good about that.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
And I feel really good about the fact that we responded to so many people and that people responded very well to the abatement notices. So that's when things got legal. That's when deadlines were put in place and penalties were put in place and, um, I probably answered about 400 emails on that, I would guess around 400. So our biggest problem was with the developers and not with the lot owners. So this year I would like to focus more on the developers since the owners will have more responsibility for themselves. However, the recording of all that comes in is still overwhelming. And so I, I will ask this year and work with Jan and our staff to see if we can get a little bit better support because if you don't respond immediately after the reports, then too much time passes and the plants mature. And according to Quentin Lewis's, and as, as soon as they get a flower, you, you don't have control over it anymore. Though, those seeds, even though they're sprayed, will still live and sprout and spread. So just going to try to work on that this year so that we're more effective with our HOAs and our developers and Cameron has encouraged me to not be bold with them. Make them follow the rules just like everyone else does. So that's my goal this year.
Do we have, uh, particularly like any kind of, what's our penalty, uh, enforcement penalties look like? Because obviously we don't want to find people. We don't want to, we just want people to take care of their weeds and encourage that behavior. But for those that don't respond to that, how, what, how big is the stick that we have? To
Well, the way that we've revised the code here, they will be responsible for paying for the treatment. And we aren't going to coddle them along. We're not, we're just going to immediately treat if they don't respond to the abatement notice. So their penalty will be that they will have to pay that treatment.
And if they don't pay the treatment, do we then, do they have a tax lien or something? Do we do something? Can we do something with the county?
Yeah, if
And their tax?
Yeah, Mayor, if you, the mayor has brought this area up on H and I J. And maybe some of the sections before that, it
We'll let, we'll let, we'll let Polly talk about the enforcement process.
Polly can
Yeah, we, it's similar to our ACE program where we can, uh, put a tax lien on and we, um, you know, report it to, you know, it gets put on their property as a lien, uh, in the county records. Okay. Good.
They received that same information last year too, so. But the abatement notices were the biggest help last year, and I worked with Cameron on that. Now, on, on the date that their report is due to have that as a set date is really problematic because um, last year, probably by the end of March, we should have started treating. And this year, we'll probably still have snow on the ground. So to say that it has to be done by a certain date invites us to have years when the plants mature and they're so mature that the spring is non-effective. So that's my concern about that. And Polly, maybe you and Cameron and I can work on that to see how we can resolve that. And, uh, I wanted to ask, Alicia, did you include my document, uh, about what weeds need to be treated? Could we bring that up? And then I'll be through with my comments.
I thought I put it in there, but this kind of changed so much that it might have got taken out. So let me hurry and email that to Mayor too. I'm so sorry. I had a lot of
Is, is her document in the, uh, in the PDF package, Alicia?
Um, like I said, it might have this, I, I took this in and put this out so many different times that, um, I may have missed that second document. Um, let me, I'll just
While she's sending that, I, I'll just let you know that I, uh, we have sent out the Utah Field Guide every year. And, but, and last year's the first year we said these specific weeds. One or more of these exist on your lot. And last year, I believe it's you, Chris, that asked that we could have something more specific for the owners to look at so that they would be sure that they were eradicating what they should. And not what they should. So, um, I spent quite a bit of time researching all of those weeds. They're all within the Utah Field Guide. And more specifically, they are all on the Wasatch County Weed Control and Weed Board's list of weeds that, noxious weeds that exist in Wasatch County. They don't necessarily, some of their list doesn't necessarily exist in Hideout. So I took the ones that exist in Hideout because I've been observing for so many years. And talked with, um, Brad Bailey at Greenleaf. And so this document, uh, that I created lets you see the weed in full bloom and what it looks like as it comes up early in the spring because we're going to be asking people to eradicate at the rosette stage. So we have 17 noxious weeds that we're going to be asking people to look for. And here you can see, and I've indicated if it's an annual or a biannual, because at the bottom of this list, you have an explanation of what that means. So these are the pictures of the weeds that exist in Hideout and what they look like as they come up in the springtime. Uh, the yellow clover is very invasive, but we haven't put it on the list because it's bee friendly and other things. But in talking with Quentin, with the county, he said, you can put it on your list if you want because it's extremely invasive and should always be kept off of sidewalks and roadways. So, anyway.
That yellow clover is everywhere, right?
It's very, it's very invasive. And the problem is that even though it's not a noxious weeds, it, it crowds out the natural vegetation that should exist in Hideout. So this year, in the, in the letter that we send out, I'll have a statement about why. Why we have to eradicate noxious weeds. Here's the little section that shows us of what these life cycle definitions mean. So one of the important things about that is that we have when we just cut something down or we make sure it's six feet high, according to the nature of the plant, it can spread twice as many, um, rhizomes and stones in the soil. And it can also just flower again even stronger with more buds on it. So my big goal this year is to let people know you have to eradicate before the flowers form. And Quentin at Wasatch County was quite adamant about that. So just wanted you to see that they, and, and I agree, it's great, Polly, that we have something in the town code that says based on the Utah Field Guide and based on the Wasatch County Noxious Weed List.
I, I think your point about the date is, is valid, Carol. I mean, as, as, as we all know, we'll probably have snow until May. In, in the north, in the north facing, in the north facing, in the north facing, uh, parts of town, I think it's, you know, very realistic. Um, so, uh, it becomes challenging to, to put a date, Polly. So I don't know, I don't know how, how we can put some language that suggests that, uh, that it's within a certain amount of time after you can see your yard, garden? I don't know.
How do, how do you determine it, Carol? Because I, I mean, I guess that's hard, or we can say, you know, a date um, between, you know, March 1st and July 1st, which will be posted on the town website, something like that.
Yeah, we could do that, or I thought we could, you know, set a date and then adjust it as the year plays out. So we would have
They keep changing your ordinance, but I just, I want to make, make it clear for people that they can look and know when kind of the deadline is. I mean, maybe
Yeah, I like that. I like that thought.
So, and it's, it, it's also easy for me to do an email blast. I have a current list on hand all the time that Luann and I keep current of all landowners. So we, we can send out anything we need to say to anyone about that due date. The thing that's dangerous is to have the due date be so late that the weeds can no longer be controlled because we have to have a 14-day period to give that, uh, the owner a chance to reply to the abatement notice. And the abatement notices a chance to reply to the abatement notice, and the abatement notices, notices don't go out until after the deadline, and if, if, if things aren't taken care of within two weeks, we're going to be too late, and we'll just see more weeds the next year instead of fewer weeds. So. Quentin of Wasatch County said, if you stay on this for about five years and kill them in the rosette stage, you'll start seeing vast improvements. So that's just what I'm going for. So we'll maybe think about that. But.
Okay.
Yeah, so I had lots of great counsel on this from two gentlemen at Utah State University and from the Utah Weed Control Association. And the, and Quentin at the Wasatch County Board, so I feel good about the suggestions that we're making for change, and I appreciate the opportunity that you've given me to. And Jan, thank you, and Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to present to you here. And thank you, council members.
I, I got a couple of questions. So did we settle on the date range or what, how we want to handle it so we don't have to keep rewriting the ordinance, but rather having a flexibility as Carol was suggesting?
What if, Carol, what do you think the earliest date would be? And we could put that down and then put, unless it's extended by, you know?
Um, yeah, we need, we need them to, to report in by about the second week of May, no later than that. So. And maybe we could make a little clause that says, or when the plants emerge, just to give people an idea and let them know how much more effective it is to get it in the rosette stage.
I'm, I'm just trying to craft this so that, that it's enforceable. Someone might say, well, I don't know what that means. So if we make it like May fifteenth, and then we can put in, we could just amend it, so instead of saying June twenty first or June twentieth, we say May fifteenth, unless extended by the town, which will be put, you know, which will be put on the website or published or no, and you'll be notified or something like that.
Sure. Sure. What do you think, Mayor?
I'm fine with that.
Do you, have you ever seen anything pop up and get really big before the middle of May? We, we could put it the first week of May, but this year that, this year, for sure, we would have to extend it. I think if we put the first week of May.
Yeah, so here it's, so Polly, are we talking about item C here? Do you want to change that?
Yes.
No later?
So, May fifteenth?
May fifteenth, unless otherwise notified?
Yes. Yeah, that, that works.
So, May fifteenth annually, okay, yeah, that's perfect.
Do we know if any of these weeds start to grow under the snow? I mean, there are many plants that do start growing under snow. I mean, I've had them in my yard. I mean, do we, do we know if there's any particular weeds that would start earlier?
You know, when I lived in the Camas Valley, I, I mean, the, the second the snow was gone and the temperatures were above forty-five degrees, they just came popping up, so. They emerged pretty quickly, I'd say, within a week or two. So, but I think if the ground's covered with snow, I, I, if, if there were any growth, I think it would be quite confined.
Um, I, I think it's possible, Carol, but the problem is nobody will see them.
Yes, that's probably a bigger problem.
I mean, so, so my, my view, my view, my view is, this is, this is this is directionally correct. We're working on it. People are doing, um, doing, you know, certainly the homeowners are doing, according to Carol, they're doing what they're supposed to do, which is great. We've got some work to do on the HOAs, that's fine, we can do that. And so I'm not, you know, with this, a hundred percent is impossible on this one. There's no other than Agent Orange, napalm, one of those kinds of things, there's no way. So, so this, this to me just keeps the pressure on, and you know, we're not going to get them all, but we're going to get a good bunch of them, and we're going to keep, you know, it just keeps it going. And again, as I mentioned last year, the problem, a part of our problem is, is we're surrounded by places that don't comply. State Park being one, and with the water level so low last year, and the wind direction that it is. And we were getting seeds, it wouldn't matter if, if we had nothing but pavement and cracks because we'd still have weeds growing out of our cracks from, from, from the seeds down below, so. You know, good, I'll take, I'll take eighty percent of something versus a hundred percent of nothing.
Mayor, uh, I've actually got a couple of questions for Carol about plants. So Carol, you mentioned the yellow clover. It's not noxious, but it is very invasive.
Yes.
The way this ordinance is written, I don't think we address the yellow clover. And then the second, the second question, sorry, we can come, come back to that. Um, Carol, what is the name of the weed that makes foxtails that's really bad for dogs? We have those everywhere.
Describe a foxtail to me.
It's a, it's the top of a blade here. I don't, I don't know anything about plants. All I know is foxtail. It's a kind of a spiny, spiky top of a plant that gets up dogs' noses.
Okay, I, I know what it is. Because my husband and I had it all over our ten acres up in Preston, Idaho last year. And.
I can tell you this.
There are two kinds of it. There, there's the kind that is very soft.
Yes, the very soft ones are very pretty, but.
Right, and, and then there's the other kind that is nasty and, and embeds into dog's skin and
Yes.
and horses' skin, nostrils. And I, and I think it's called foxtail.
Mary, you're familiar with it too?
Oh, yeah, I, I had, I had surgery on my dog because of it, so.
Exactly.
Do you know, it is not on the Utah Noxious Field Guide?
Right, so there, that goes back to my other question about can we expand just beyond the Noxious Field Guide, the Noxious Weed List, and include that foxtail plant? And perhaps that yellow clover, which evidently makes good ground cover next to highways, but it's terrible here, it's so invasive. And it, as you said, it crowds out a lot of other native, all the other native plants. And it's everywhere here, and it's just spreading.
Yeah, and it's hard to know what to do because it, it is really not a noxious weed, and it is very friendly to bees, and the whole world has a problem with enough bees right now, so.
All right.
That's hard.
So the problem with that right now is that we have, you're now entering into other, other areas of ordinance, Chris, when you talk about things that are not noxious because they are, they are in, for example, native plant mix, which which is supposed to be put down as, as ground cover for a lot of, of the the right-of-way properties. So now we would have to amend what the native plant mix is that goes down and and require people to find a different seed mix, et cetera, so it's not, it's not a not a one stroke of a pen. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, understand that it's good.
Okay.
broader implications.
That sounds like something we should really consider because, I mean, I think you know, that seed mix on the side of a UDOT right-of-way for a highway is one thing. But in a residential neighborhood with people who we got a lot of dog walkers here and people who, as you mentioned, you know, can be very serious. I do, my dog didn't have to have surgery, but she did have to be put under general anesthetic put out and like rinsed out to try to get that stuff out of her nose.
It, it can, it can kill an animal.
It can kill an animal. Maybe we don't take that on in this ordinance, but I think we should come back to it.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say. Let's, let's, let's do this, and let's, let's visit the other opportunities that have been mentioned.
All right, yeah, let's, let's come back to this revisited. That's, thank you. But, um, but Carol, I, I actually really, Carolyn, Polly, Cameron, I really appreciate all the work you've done on this. I, I, I really like all these changes.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? I'm going. Yes?
There is one thing that, before you call for resolution on this or a vote. There is one thing I think I better mention, and that is that the very invasive white-topped plant that has been all over Shoreline Phase One, Two, and Three is on the list for eradication this year. It is a noxious weed. It's not good for animals. It's, makes, makes animals very sick, so. I know that there has been a lot of debate about it, but I put it on our list, so if there's anything you want to tell me about that in the future, let me know.
I, I guess, Carol, if it's on the state noxious weed list, is it in this, in this set of pictures?
It's, it's in this little document that you're going through. Just keep going through, and I'll stop you when we're on it.
Are you talking about Yarrow?
No. There it is. Whoop, down. Perennial pepper weed. And then there's, that's the perennial version of it, and then above this, a couple of pages, is the annual version of it that we have so much of in hideout. There we go. There we go. Whoops, down. And it's called hoary cress. And it is all over the Shoreline properties. It was probably brought in on trucks and a soil that is foreign to hideout. Now, that is one way we get our noxious weeds. It comes from other building sites. So that's the big debate right there, and it's not good for animals. It's poisonous to animals, and so.
I guess I if it's on the noxious weed list, it's a noxious weed. I accept that. I think we will have to have a conversation with the HOA in Shoreline to make sure, because I think this stuff has been actually put down as ground cover on, on lots.
I think it was in their seed mix. So that tells me that they didn't have a certified seed mix, which keeps those kinds of things out. You have to use a certified seed mix.
I think, yeah, I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to, Carol, we'll have to sit down with the HOA up there and
Yeah.
Carol Hazelton, and have a, have a discussion on how to attack this, because I think I think you guys have this on everybody's front lawn, pretty much.
Yep.
And I'm sure nobody likes it.
No.
There's a couple of people that think they like it, mostly the landscape planners who don't want to remove it.
Okay, sure, sure. No, this is going to be a burden for them for sure, but it's on the noxious weed list, so it's it's, it's in for enforcement.
Thank you.
Anyway, all right. Doing this right. Sorry, you should be seeing an ordinance a draft of an ordinance amending Title V, Chapter Four, Section 110, Standards for Weed Control to require property owners to report inspection and removal of noxious weeds. The, the language that we saw earlier modified to, to May fifteenth, unless otherwise notified in the Exhibit One. I can't show them both at the same time. Because I don't know how to. As we saw tonight, the red and blue, blue-lined one is, is what will is what this ordinance will comprise of as well as the pictures. So. Section One Amendment, you know, Title V, Chapter, as, as, as redlined in Exhibit One, and and the pictures, which this ordinance doesn't say, so. But we would, we would, we would incorporate this as well as the, as the standards list. So I'll be looking for a motion to adopt.
Would it be, a mayor, would it be as redlined Exhibit One and illustrated Exhibit Two would be the photos?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, those would just fulfill what Polly listed on Exhibit One.
No, I would not include those photos as part of your ordinance. I, I think you should put that up on the website. But there's an official list. It changes every year, so you don't want to say this is what it is because that can change, and we don't want to have to change this every year when the list changes. So we're, we're just referring to the state and county lists.
I, I, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. So therefore, a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the standards as described in Exhibit One that we looked at this evening with, with the date change that we made to May fifteenth.
So moved.
But Chris?
That is.
Our second.
Carol?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so Ralph, how do you vote?
Yeah, a lot of good work on this over the last few sessions, so thanks, Carol, and yes.
Sherry?
Yes, and thanks, Carol, for so much hard work on this every year.
Carol Hazelton?
Yes, and again, thank you, Carol. It's just been.
And Chris?
Wonderful.
Thank you. I vote, I vote yes.
Thank you, Chris. Motion carries. We will make the changes and get the word out. So Carol, we'll need to start the communication process because it's changed somewhat dramatically from last year, so we need to make sure we start that process too. But thanks for all your work on this, you and Cameron and so forth.
Welcome.
Okay. The next three should be pretty quick. Polly can explain this, but we already did this once, but if you remember, we had enough typo stuff in there that Polly felt we needed to, instead of having a whole bunch adopted with, with these five different changes that we should come forward and get it straight. So, and the other thing I think that's different is we're making the resolutions, right, Polly?
Yeah, so just after the meeting last time and talking to Alicia, we just realized it's going to be a lot easier to track to have another resolution instead of having kind of this hybrid. So from now on, you'll see with any extension, a resolution so that we can tie.
You just cut out Polly.
To the. To the actual extension. And what's that? Can you hear me?
Yeah, you cut out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You do cut out for. So go back to when you were talking about Thomas.
Oh, just that we just decided that it just in order to track these better. We needed to have a resolution for the extension. And so you're going to see these anytime we have extensions from now on. And it makes it easier to change any typos or anything else. Explain why it's being extended, and then we have a good. Document memorialize that.
Thanks, Polly. So there's nothing, Thomas, you you can confirm, there's nothing different in here than we already we already approved. It's simply putting in a resolution form.
Everything was the same as what we discussed. This is an extension for six months. And a couple of typo corrections in this one and this and the following one. Yeah, that's exactly right. But otherwise, nothing changed. It's really just a resolution confirming what you voted on last month.
So council. You're obviously welcome to ask questions, but it is what we've already said we're okay to do.
I I think we should just. No questions. We should just get her done. Get it done.
Exactly.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve a resolution, approving extension of resolution. Twenty twenty two R eleven for the claim phase four subdivision.
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Carol?
Yes. Yes.
Ralph? Ralph? Whoops. I still on media.
Definitely.
Thank you. Okay. Sherry?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is. This is the. The one where we had the two. Remember, we have the lots down in Overlook Village at the on the Longview Drive at the bottom of. Hideout. Cove. Lots thirty eight, thirty nine. We extended that as well. Then we corrected a couple of typos, as it says here, where it said Thomas was cutting and pasting and kind of. Missed that one.
I I thought I thought we were gonna make it Overlook Village, not. Right where it actually is. Not Hideout Canyon.
Okay, it's overlooked subdivision Hideout Canyon.
Okay. Thank you.
So.
This is also the same. It just extends it six months and corrects those two typos. And we'll make that correction, Chris. Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So again, looking for a motion to approve a resolution. Approving a subdivision amendment for lots thirty three nine and Hideout Canyon amended phase one subdivision located in. Now, it does say it in the document Overlook Village. It doesn't say in the title. Do we want to put that in the title?
Could can you hold on for one second? What's six months from February ninth? March, April, May, June, August, August ninth. It says September ninth, right?
September eighth.
Number eight?
Yeah. This one was you granted. This one came a month early because we knew that they were going to need the extension. And so the extension is for six months from their six months requirement, which carries it to September eighth of twenty twenty.
Okay. That explains it. Thank you.
Yep.
By definition, these lots are in Overlook Village, and it does say Overlook Village up above, although it doesn't say it in the title. So I don't know if we want to change the title to put Overlook Village in the prince.
We we could put that in parentheses if you want, and if we're going to do that, I would suggest that then we do that in conclusions of law, I think, number one and two. Just to keep it really, really clear. Or I'm sorry, findings of fact, number one and two. Yeah. We'll say Hideout Canyon. Overlook Village.
I I think it's important to put Overlook Village in there. Hideout Canyon is just too broad.
I agree.
Okay, because this is a PDF, I I I can make a note in here, but.
And Mayor, I'll send that to you and Alicia right now.
So Thomas, you just sent me. This resolution with that language, is that what you're saying?
I will do that in one minute. I'm changing it right now.
I just something just came in, so I didn't know.
Okay.
That was. I think we're gonna do it this way, and then you can just make sure that.
Exactly. This with this correction, and I will make sure that Alicia has that corrected one.
Okay. Okay, so then. Looking for. A motion to approve the resolution. That that approves the subdivision amendment for us thirty eight, thirty nine in the Hideout Canyon amended phase one pod nine subdivision. Parentheses, Overlook Village located.
I'll move.
Thank you. Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ralph. Carol?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes.
Thank you, Ralph.
Yes.
And Sherry?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Item five. We so let me go back to the. Make this big enough. See again. Item five has to do, you remember last time we approved Jake McHarg as the truck as a treasurer? And so. Part of that responsibility is to be able to access the towns. We have PTIF fund. That's where a lot of our money sits. It's not used for the day to day pay payment. It's used for. Sort of annual bills and things like that. And so he needs to be able to look at that fund to be able to do his job. So. I don't I didn't know we needed an authorizing a resolution for this, because in the past I've just authorized it, but apparently we do. Jan, you want to talk about that at all? Why we why this is a. Needs to go to council?
It's just a part of the state's requirements. It's a statutory requirement that we. We have this resolution for our treasurer.
Okay.
Is there any liability for the town?
The treasurer is covered under a bond under our insurance. So. No.
Do do folks like Jake in Utah, do they have their own cover as well?
No. You know, I I suppose there could be a liability that exceeds the bond issue, but. You know, we've worked with Jake and I I don't see this as a significant risk.
And Jan, aren't there also checks and balances? It's not like he can just take out all the money on his own, right?
Absolutely. We get statements that come into town, Town Hall there. And we've we've worked significantly on our fraud risk controls. And. Yeah, we would notice.
So this is this is just standard procedure for. Towns in the state to pass a resolution. And that individual who's a treasurer is bonded by the town by the towns. Is that?
Correct.
Is that standard?
We passed this resolution. It's a form resolution. We passed it for Wes when he became the town treasurer, and it's. It's a routine, and this resolution is actually produced by the state. And requested to make changes. So when I. Requested the change, they asked me to produce this form to update.
Okay, thanks.
This form doesn't actually. State what you say. All this form does is says that. We we. Town Hideout continues to work with the PTIF fund. It doesn't say anything about Jake having access, so I'm a little confused.
Well, so the next one down.
That, there you go, yeah.
That's the next one up. So yeah, so this. So the resolution. Is different than. Allowing Jake to be. A signatory. The way I read it. That the resolution basically says we're going to be part of PTIF. And this says that. We're gonna allow. The. Above named entity access to the PTIF fund.
So and I think what it is. Is in that form that the state requires, it says that the town has passed a resolution. So that's why we have the resolution. And both forms came from the state. That resolution.
I know. I know that. I'm just making sure that the. Council is clear that there's really two things we're doing in in one. In one.
Suggest we add the mayor. On on the line underneath Jake. Just so we we're sure that we have both. Continuing to be on the account. The mayor is authorized, but. Let's just restate the mayor on this line.
Okay. Again, I can't I can't do this on this form. I can just put a note on it. So all I was clarifying for council is that we are. Both authorizing Jake and reconfirming that. We are participating in the PTIF. So I'm looking for a motion to. Adopt the resolution to engage in the Utah Public Treasurers Investment Fund, PTIF of the Town of Hideout. And to add Jake McHarg as. A. A named individual to act on behalf of the Town of Hideout.
Yeah, I'll some move.
Thank you, Ralph.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sherry. Chris?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we move on. Who are the current authorized user users?
Me and Wes.
Is there a process to remove authorized users?
This is it.
This is it. That's why we're doing it.
You're adding a user, but are you gonna remove? Wes is no longer working with us, right?
That's correct, and I've notified the state, so notification is already. This is already taking place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I had asked. You know, we had a retreat in January and I asked. The action item folks to. Talk a bit about where we are on the follow up. Action items from that. And so. So that's. The most mostly assigned items were to. Jan, Katie, Thomas, and. And Tim. So. I was gonna give take a moment for the council to get brought up to date on. The action items. Jan, how do you wanna? Do you want to start?
Sure. So the mayor asked for a five year plan on. Capital improvements and public works and infrastructure issues. We have been diligently dialing down on. What those expenses look like. We reached out to Tim, Dan. Kent today. We've been actively pursuing a plan. Understanding. What repairs, what? What are things that we're looking to? And we're refining that plan with. Clarity. That's going well.
And we will see that. As part of the. Budget review, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just pulling up my note where I. Passed for. Updates. You can figure out where that is, because I can figure out who else. So Thomas, I know you had some things you were gonna look at. As far as the. State Park entrance, I think. We're looking at some work there.
Some community visioning. We we've been discussing. Thomas and I met and. We have a written plan, which we didn't. We didn't want to make public at this point. Go ahead, Thomas.
Yeah, we're we we we've created a a conceptual plan for that area. That addresses a couple of things, that entrance, number one, but number two, some opportunities for mixed use or commercial development. So. We've got a plan together, put together, and we're working with the EDC on that, and we're hoping to get that in front of the Planning Commission. Probably maybe next month, I think. Does that is that what you were thinking, Jan?
Yeah, and I also have set up a meeting with. Mountain Land Association of Government. To see if we can work collaboratively. Mountain Land Association of Government is one of the seven entities that distributes money for the state. And so I have a a meeting set up, and we're gonna discuss how we can collaborate.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the initiatives was on economic development, increase our, maybe, I'm not sure what the word is, but our, our efficacy or proficiency in economic development. And we have discussed at the EDC level, expanding our committee to bring in some regional players who may be able to assist us in some of our goals.
Yeah, one of the things I asked was to look at sources of funding, so that's, you know, grants, gifts, any mechanisms we're allowed to use to supplement our costs to do needed work, buy shares, whatever.
Yes, and we have some offers of assistance in the community to review potential opportunities for grants. So we are always looking for volunteers, but we are making progress on that. And especially in, as it relates to our five-year plan and infrastructure needs, which are significant.
Okay. The other question I had was determining the impact of providing space for, for public services such as fire, emergency, police, et cetera. Council, just, you know, Fire District has been around asking, you know, as you guys grow, you know, is there any space for us to do something over here, et cetera, et cetera. So we're just trying to understand what the implications of providing space, depending on how the results of the Supreme Court ruling goes. We had space in that design for, again, public services. So we're just trying to, I'm just trying to understand, I mean, we, we talked about whether there was what the value, besides the, you know, the inherent value of having nearby services, you know, is there anything that helps us offset costs? Do we, you know, whatever? So just trying to understand, you know, what it means by saying yes to allowing these folks to come in. Do we have tax implications, et cetera?
I met with Wasatch County Manager and we discussed this. I know Thomas has been working on the planning side of it. We discussed the financial side of it, how it might be funded at the level of the county and how we could potentially utilize space. We could, we talked about potentially leasing or offsetting a lease. There, there's a variety of ways we could utilize the space that is a win-win for the town as well as the county. And there's nothing set in stone, but the county would initially think of utilizing some CIB funding. And, and then we could join the conversation if we want to make it a multi-purpose building. They're, they're very willing to work with us at this point. And do you have anything to add to that, Thomas?
No, I don't think so. I think, I think you've covered it. I think that we'll, we'll continue to work on that and dig into the details.
I just wanted council to know that, you know, that I continue to keep the action items from our retreat in front of the team and that, you know, there's work progressing. And give you an update every couple of months on how, how they're doing and what we're learning. And at some point, some of these will come to fruition and we'll be bringing things to you for, you know, review and approval, hopefully. Any questions from council for Thomas or Jan or? Yeah, Thomas or Jan?
No, just thanks for all the hard work, we really appreciate it.
Now, just a quick question, I know we talked about that Triangle Parcel and the Fire District came in. Has there, has anything, has, has there been any further progress or movement with that since we talked about it last time?
So.
The only thing that, go ahead. Go ahead, Thomas, go ahead.
I was going to say, the only thing that we've done is started to look at some of the details and the topography in a little bit more detail and what potential additional opportunities could exist in conjunction with the fire station. But that is, it's been all internal at this point, so.
Okay.
It's significant, go ahead, Mayor, sorry.
No, it's Chris, sorry.
Go ahead, Chris.
I, I just want to say, when that, when I saw that presented, I was very excited. Uh, you know, our number one, number one risk here is wildfire plus.
Yeah, for sure.
Sure would be nice to have better than a 17-minute response time from the Jordanell, uh, Jordanell Station. Up here.
Yeah, additionally, it would help our insurance policies as well.
Yeah, and, and look at it, opportunities for trailhead parking and/or, you know, public works opportunities and/or mixed use opportunities. So it, it.
Exactly.
It has a real opportunity, we have an opportunity to really create some sort of mixed use, a significant development on a small piece of land that is pretty, a, a bit of a game changer for the community, we agree.
Right, and that piece of land is very close to claim, right?
It's just, just to the north west of claim, yep.
All right, and we know, when we get to the report out for the parks, the post committee, well, we're not going to talk about claim this time, but claim is on the agenda for the future, to work on a public trail network there. So having a parking area would be pretty awesome.
Yeah, we're, I mean, our, our goal is to, if we're going to think about using that space, we want to make sure that we're, we're not doing it piecemeal. That we've got a vision for potentially an entire public service complex with appropriate space, et cetera, et cetera. So that we, you know, pour foundations once, even if we don't build, build it all out right away. You know, get the underground lines designed in a way that can serve greater than just a single fire station, et cetera.
Yeah, we should know our destination before we start our journey.
Exactly, so we're, we're, we're trying, that's what we're, we're working on, is getting some thoughts around, how do you make that into holistic space? And, you know, if, depending on how things go with the Supreme Court ruling, you know, we have space identified there and maybe that's, that, that space now gets repurposed if we, if we use the Triangle Parcel. So we'll see. Okay. Um, and so Thomas, maybe you can do a quick update on the Planning Commission since Tony's not on?
No, I am, Phil.
Oh, Tony's. Oh, you are, oh, you're on the phone. Okay. Great, great. Oh, good.
Okay.
Sorry, you're on the phone.
First, I'd like to thank, thank the council for appointing Rachel to the seat on the commission. Um, and basically last week, we went through the, extensively went through the amendment for the that you guys passed today in regard to the annexation. Also, the Wasatch Fire Chief was on and they were discussing the parcel of land and what they would like to do there. Um, I had also gotten a call from their architect prior to that. And he had asked me if we would be amenable to rezoning the land. And I said, well, you know, everything would be on the table depending upon what you're proposing and how things look going forward. Left it, he was supposed to send me drawings of what they're proposing, I've never gotten them yet. Um, but it was left open-ended and there was no commitments made by anybody. Um, we have just received a concept plan for what was the Baldur's and will now be known as the Bloom Project. If you'd like me to go into a little bit of detail as to what is proposed there on the concept plan, I can, just in regards to number of units and types of units.
Well, I think, Tony, that's, I mean, that's what the Planning Commission is for. If you're going to talk about it next week, I think we'll let it, let it come through to you guys first and then.
Okay, that's fine. Um, also, Commissioner Gunn will be attending the April 6th and 7th, the Utah Land Use Institute Spring Conference down in St. George on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And at this time, I do not believe we will be having a meeting in April for the simple fact that without a alternate, I don't think there's a week where we will have a quorum because people are traveling all month. Um, we've discussed it, I've discussed it with Alicia, and if there's anything that's pressing, we will certainly amenable to moving up the May meeting to the earliest possible day, to a calendar day, whatever might need to be heard.
Tony, I mentioned to council, I mentioned to council earlier that you had, I think, three potential interested parties for alternate roles, so.
Yes, I've spoken to one in depth. As soon as I get off the phone with the council, I'll be having a phone call with one of the other candidates. And I have to get the contact information for the third, which just basically came about, I think, either yesterday or today. And I'll, I'll reach out to him over the weekend, talk to him, and then I'll get back to you, Mr. Mayor.
So, um, if, if it would help you, because our next meeting is April, April 13th, I think. Yeah, so it would help you, we could potentially name an alternate that would allow you to have a a meeting and potentially allow you to have a meeting in April if you wanted to.
That'd be fine, um, I will, I'll just have to get touch base with Alicia to make sure that we, what week we are, if that, not that week, then we'll move the meeting to another appropriate week where we do have, we'll have a quorum.
Okay.
And then my other question to you, Mr. Mayor, is seeing that we have three candidates, would you consider having two alternates?
We're supposed to have two alternates.
I know, but we've only, we've only had one, so I didn't know if you wanted to keep it that way or just fill the two spots.
No, no, we just never seem to have enough people to have two, so yeah, I would love to fill two alternate roles.
Okay, so I'll make sure I, I, I reach out to all three, um, the two other candidates before the weekend is over and I touch base with you at the beginning of next week.
That'll be fine, Tony, thank you.
Okay, and that's basically all that we have from last month and going forward.
I, I don't think we ever have the opportunity to say this enough, Tony, that we appreciate all the work that the Planning Commission does. It's, it's a thankless job, it's a lot of work. You probably spend more hours on the town than, than the council does. Just because of the detailed nature of, of Planning Commission work. And we are, we are great, grateful and appreciative.
Well, in that regard, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. But in that regard, I have to say, because of the work that Alicia and Thomas do, it makes it much easier to get through what we have to get through.
There you go. Tony, thanks for everyone's help all around.
Yep.
Okay, Thomas, DRC, anything new, new there?
We had no meetings this month and so nothing to report, so I'll catch you guys up next month. We'll probably have the next phase of Deer Springs, so I'll, I'll keep you up to date at that point.
Okay, thank you. Sheri, anything new to report?
Uh, yeah, actually, we had a great meeting, we have got a lot done in our committee. Um, one of, one member of our committee, Valerie, is working with Alicia on the communications that you request, requested at the retreat. To try to get the word out to residents and engage residents either through the app or Facebook or they're working on different ways to do that. Another member of our committee, Jan DeFeo, has acquired some funds from All West, $1,500 grant towards our events in the summer, as well as she's working with Rocky Mountain Power to see if, they, they've indicated they will also give us some money again. Um, we don't have an amount on that yet, so that's good. And then we've also put together our first summer event for July 28th. We have a great band booked and so far, two out of three food trucks confirmed. Um, and this will be, this will be a really nice one. Then for the winter, we're working, thanks to Chris, we have a, a possible trail for a snowshoe event that we're going to do maybe either March 26th or April 2nd. We're working on a coffee and hot chocolate truck to come and people can come and hang out in Snowshoe if they wish. Um, we're just trying to confirm that it won't be, it's hard with the weather and also whether it's going to be super muddy where we're planning to do it. So it's sort of a last minute event, but I don't imagine it'll be a ton of people. And then another member of the committee had a great idea to try to get a, a ski day together for everyone that has, in the town that has Deer Valley ski passes to meet and ski together. So just some things we're working on so far.
Good.
Yep.
Pretty nice. Uh, Post, Chris?
Okay, Post Committee met on February 14th. Uh, Jason Whitaker from Jordanell State Park joined us. We had, uh.
Great.
Yep, we had a long discussion about various things. Jan also wa, was talking to the park manager about potential summer event plans and a potential venue. We had a long discussion about that. And also volunteer activities as well. And continued, uh, talk, talking about a Jordanell, Jordanell State Park pass for Hideout residents. So we didn't get any traction specifically on anything, we talked about a lot of items, no commitments made. But then we followed up, oh, sorry, and Carol Custerly joined us because we needed, we need to work through website updates for the committee and talk about communications and also formulate a post-committee mission statement, which we had never done. So really appreciate Carol helping us with that. After that, the committee did some email correspondence to work through a set of projects. Uh, we're not ready to socialize yet, but you know, short-term, midterm and long-term projects that when we get back together, we would start talking about which of them we could commit to starting in 2023. So our next meeting should be pretty interesting. Uh, it comes up, I, I think, I think it's next week, I have to check my calendar. But, um, you know, we made, made good progress and more to come.
Thank you, Chris. Doing well just to get Jason in the room, I think that's great.
He's been really, really very interested in meeting with us. He spends as much time with us as, as we need, and we, we try to respect his time, but he was very forthcoming with the, the progress, I, you know, this amount of snow we've all had. It's also happened in the park, they've had it as well. So, uh, the, the project at Ross Creek to build that day use area is obviously set back because of the weather. I did, I do think he mentioned something about June, about being finished. But, you know, I think that's really unknown at this point. And in the meantime, the Ross Creek area is still, is still closed.
I did notice that, um, they completely plowed it out and got all the equipment kind of freed from the snow. And then the next day, we had that huge snowstorm and got completely covered again.
Well, thanks, Carol, said you could watch it from your dining room window.
Window and I just went, oh.
Yeah, exactly.
I feel the same way about picking out my hydrant.
Or my, or my driveway, you know, as soon as I get, as soon as I get it cleared side to side. Or my, or my driveway, you know, as soon as I get, as soon as I get it cleared side to side, ah, there's more snow. Right? And no, and no place to put it. Yeah.
Um, okay, thank you. Chris, Carol, anything new on the transportation side of things?
No, I don't think they're gonna reach any decisions until after ski season.
Okay. Thank you. Polly, anything that you wanna take us into exact for?
No, I don't think we need to. I'll send a email just giving you general updates, but you know, as you all know, the Supreme, this doesn't require closed session, but the Supreme Court heard arguments on Monday. And so now we wait for a ruling, an opinion to be issued. So it was interesting arguments and I thought it was, everyone presented very professionally and made strong arguments. So we'll see what the Supreme Court does.
Polly, do you have any sense at all how long this would take for? And are they going to do an oral ruling and then a written ruling, or what's the normal procedure for Supreme Court?
Supreme Court always just issues a written ruling. We have no idea how long. Sometimes it's two months, sometimes it's a year. So it's totally up to them. So we'll, just as soon as we hear something, I'll, I'll let you know.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Well, thanks, everybody for being, yes?
Mayor, this is Tim. I just wanted to give you an update. I, I know I texted you, but I did check with our guys. I, I did check with our guys on Golden Eagle, and we have not been requested by Mustang for any pressure testing.
Okay. There you go. Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Um, and thanks all of you, counsel, for being on point. I wanna be publicly on record for thanking Tim, Dan and the team for doing an amazing job considering the brutal nature of plowing the roads in thirty-five mile an hour winds. As somebody who's been driving the plow recently to help out, I can tell you plowing hideout in those heavy wind nights is really, really, really tough. And I know people have called and complained and suggested that we could do a better job, but I'll tell you, I have not seen anyone who couldn't get out. They may have not liked what they've had to get through, but nobody was, nobody was trapped for, for very long if they were. I know there were some berms in front of some of the HOA properties that the HOA were responsible for removing that caused people a little bit of distress, but overall, I'm, I can't thank the team enough for what they've done. It's just been one hellacious winter. And we've learned a lot and just counsel's edification. I, I've scheduled with the guys a debrief from the winter so that we can sit down and understand what we think we need to have. Should we have another once-in-five-year kind of event like this, that we have all the equipment and capabilities that we need to make sure that the roads stay, stay passable. So thanks to, thanks, guys, for all you do. And with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn this evening and let us all go home.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sherry. Ralph?
Yes.
Want to go home? Thank you.
A nice job, guys. Yeah, just to echo, which was, you know, tough, tough job.
Carol?
Uh, yes.
To, to end the meeting, yes. Sherry?
Yes.
And Chris?
Uh, yes, and I wanna say, snowplow drivers are heroes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
I agree. They've done a great job.
So, thank you all. Meeting is adjourned at nine oh one PM on the ninth of March.
Night.